So we'll call the Tuesday, September 20, 2016 meeting of the Everett Planning Commission to Order, starting with the roll call, please.
Chair Holland.
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Here.
Commissioner Adams.
Here.
Commissioner Sand.
Here.
Commissioner Jordison.
Here.
Commissioner Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Here.
Commissioner Lark.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Okay, we've got a crowded cabin, so... Has the Commissioners have an opportunity to review the meeting minutes from September 6th? And if so, any...
Yeah, I have two changes.
Okay.
On page four, if you can put "citizen comments" before Ryan Countryman, that's how it's been signified in the other pages. And then on page three, I had made some comments, so if you could include after regarding individual behavior, and then also suggestions for financing, such as the CHIP program, to include efficiency upgrades. And if you want, I can email you that language.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay. So that's all.
Do you... Kathy, do you have that, which paragraph that was on page three?
The first line.
Oh, the first line on page three, okay. Any other comments or corrections?
Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Lark.
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Beck.
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison.
Yes.
Commissioner Sand.
Yes.
Commissioner Adams.
Yes, but just as a point of clarification, that includes the revisions, right?
Correction.
Okay, yes.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Yes.
Chair Holland.
Yes.
Reports from the Commissioners. Commissioner Dunn?
I attended my neighborhood meeting with the Lowell Civic Association, and we did the Map Your Neighborhood program, which is a really beneficial program for emergency preparedness, so I'd encourage all of our neighborhoods to do that.
Great. Mr. Lark?
I attended the Everett Station District Alliance meeting last Thursday. It was a wonderful conversation about ways to revitalize that area, so a lot of wonderful things coming down the pipeline on that, very excited.
Great. Commissioners Zalinski?
No report.
No report.
No report.
No report.
No report.
I was busy. I was at the Alliance meeting as well with Alex and shared the same thoughts. It's been about two years, and it's kind of nice to see things starting to get close to looking like something. Also attended, there was an ST3 kickoff event, and that was well-attended, and we've got to make sure that happens. And spent the greater part of a day down in Bellevue last week at the Housing Summit, and it was really interesting, and a lot of folks, including the Governor, were there. And it didn't matter if it was a developer, a builder, a realtor, the banks, or the nonprofits. Housing affordability, you know, the Governor was using words like "a crisis," and it's not good, but it's good that everybody's on the same page, because normally not all parties think the same. The market trends continue to be drive till you can afford housing, and then get out of your car and buy or rent, and that was in the three-county area. Also, interestingly, Marysville got noted that they are the fastest-growing and the number-one area on the east, excuse me, the west side of the mountains for new housing starts. And the density issue was another one that I paid a lot of attention to, because it's still, everybody wants density, as long as it's in somebody else's neighborhood and not their own, and so, interesting day.
Thanks for the reports. Anything from staff?
Couple items, one is that... That'll help, thank you. Couple items, looks like for the next meeting, which is October 4th, that we will once again take up the detached accessory dwelling unit discussion, and probably try to get into those questions that we talked about, identified, but we really didn't get the chance to discuss in any detail at the previous meeting, and so hoping for some feedback and direction from the Commission on that subject. We'll be getting a notice to our people on our notification list about that workshop this week. Secondly, since I think this is the first time we've had all nine of the Commissioners present since we have gone to two alternates, Kathy has brought her camera and would like to take a picture afterwards, so that when it comes time for the Boards and Commission meetings, we have a full Commission represented, so if you are able to stick around when we're done with the regular agenda, we would appreciate that.
I'll let you borrow mine. Doesn't match. Thank you. Well, this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the Planning Commission on any items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to do so, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
If they're not on the agenda?
Yeah, for items that aren't on the agenda. We'll get to public comments on the agenda items coming up. Okay. Seeing none, I guess we're on to item one, which is definition of family.
Good evening, Alan Giffen, Planning Director, and wanted to walk through a lot of the materials that are in your packet tonight, for the benefit of the audience and those who may be watching this either live or recorded, to talk about what we are proposing exactly and what it is we are not proposing. So with that, I'll walk through a number of slides for you here, and look forward to a good discussion when I get done with my presentation. So the purpose of the workshop is to review some of our previous discussions. It's been about a year since the last time we took this up as part of the update of the Comprehensive Plan. We were mandated to include a couple of changes to the definition of family, mandated through some changes at the state that related to including adult family homes, and I think it was family home daycare, I don't even remember the exact amendments from about a year ago. And we decided at that time to table, until we had a little bit more information, the discussion about the number of unrelated adults who could be within our definition of family. We were looking at a couple of court cases from back east that were being litigated on the exact question, on the number of unrelated adults who could reside, and these were some municipalities, I think one in Connecticut and one in Pennsylvania. And it turns out that in both of those cases, the cases were dismissed on procedural grounds, and no substantive determinations were made that were helpful to give us any guidance, at least the way the courts were thinking about it back east. And so, but we wanted to bring this back for your discussion, so that it didn't waste any more time with, and we happen to have a little bit of time in our work program to do so. And so, we're proposing some amendments to definitions, and we want to also talk about the practical effect of making those code amendments. I want you to, we would like you to take public comments tonight, and then staff is looking for some direction from the Commission when you discuss your preferences or alternatives to the staff recommendations, and just have you determine what additional information you might need for future discussions or next hearing, if you're ready to move into the hearing phase after tonight's discussion. So the intent for our code amendments is to really provide clarification in our existing definitions about the number of unrelated adults that would be allowed under the definition. The code amendment also deals with not more than four living as a single housekeeping unit, and so we wanted to add a definition of single housekeeping unit, which is not in the current code. And we want to also clarify that disabled individuals are not limited to four, if it would preclude reasonable accommodation for disabled people to enjoy housing, consistent with the Federal Fair Housing Act amendments. So the proposed code amendments amend the definition of dwelling, add a definition of kitchen, and also amend the definition of rooming house, and would repeal a provision, a very brief, I think it's a sentence-long regulation in our General Provisions chapter of our code, in order to bring that into consistency with the definition of family that we're talking about here. So what are we trying to fix by making these amendments? Well, the first problem that we're dealing with is that we have, from time to time, problems in regulating, not regulating so much as impacts that are created by rooming houses, illegal rooming houses that are created in non, excuse me, in single-family zones where rooming houses are not permitted, and often the property owner will say that they're living as a family, and so they might, there might be, you know, six, eight or more of the individuals, but the problem that, and the complaints that we get from neighbors when this does occur, and it's not terribly often, but it is a common problem with our code enforcement folks, is that we have a lot of adults living together, more in kind of a rooming house situation than really living as a family. There's not really a sense of family housekeeping unit, there, people come and go at their own schedules, cars all over the yards oftentimes, because there are so many people living, adults living in a home, and they oftentimes are just renting rooms, they're not really responsible to the other tenants within the building, they're not, you know, sharing responsibilities for the maintenance of the property or housekeeping, and oftentimes, these are just de facto rooming houses, but property owner will claim they're all living as a family. And it does cause some complaints from neighborhoods when this does occur, because there's a high turnover, oftentimes, these are somewhat transient situations. The second problem is that some property owners believe that by having a home for disabled individuals, that they're exempt from all regulations, local regulations, including zoning and building codes. And this often becomes a problem when we have calls for emergency services, and our police or fire get called to a house with disabled individuals living in the house, but they are in situations where they're living in rooms without egress, that, for example, just bedroom windows, they're not, oftentimes, they're housed in parts of the house without light ventilation or emergency egress, parts of the building that have been converted illegally. And so also sometimes, safety issues with regard to overcrowding. And it's definitely a need in the community for disabled housing. We have a lot of disabled individuals living in the community, but oftentimes, the problem that we encounter are that the landlords who are renting to the disabled households have really modified the buildings and created unsafe conditions that don't comply with building codes. And so, we've talked with an interdepartmental work group we have between the Building Department, the Fire Department, Planning Code Enforcement, Legal Department, and have come up with some recommendations that the team unanimously supports in these code amendments, but we also are aware of the previous discussions, which I'll touch upon, previous discussions that the Planning Commission has had on the subject. One of the things I wanted to touch on here are what these proposed amendments do not do, and they do not change any building or fire safety codes. Problems that we encounter are not something that can be fixed by amending building codes, they're problems that we encounter because people are not complying with building or fire safety codes. We are not establishing any new process for disabled housing, for approving disabled housing. We are not establishing regulations for clean and sober housing. There was a newspaper article that prompted a large turnout at City Council about a week or so after the article appeared, and a number of individuals who felt that the city was going to be cracking down on existing property owners or tenants that lived in disabled housing, or clean, so-called clean and sober housing units. And I point out that there is no such term as clean and sober housing used in the Everett Municipal Code. I don't know if there's anything in the state law, many, many state laws that use that term, but it is not a term of law, it is a term of art, and oftentimes, when we encounter the situations that I described a moment ago, the property owner will sometimes say, "Well, we're clean and sober housing, so we're exempt from regulations." We're kind of like an Oxford House, and there was a case that City of Edmonds had, where an Oxford House, which is an organization that encourages communal or family arrangement where recovering alcoholics live together and support each other as a single housekeeping unit. Edmonds had a regulation on the number of people allowed under the definition of family that went all the way up to the U.S. Supreme Court, and the court ruled that for disabled persons, which include recovering drug and alcohol abusers, that the city could not limit the number, that they had to make reasonable accommodation for disabled people under the Federal Fair Housing Act. And the other thing that we're not proposing is to change the current number of unrelated adults that is contained in the existing code definition of family, and that is at number of four unrelated adults. So I'm going to walk through this lengthy definition with you, it's going to take several pages here, but broke it up into bite-sized chunks here. And so the proposed definition, and I guess I'll bore you by reading the whole thing, just so that it is on the record. "Family means a person living alone, or any of the following living together as a single housekeeping unit, and sharing common living, bathroom, cooking, and eating facilities, provided, however, that any limitation on the number of residents resulting from this definition shall not be applied if it prohibits the city from making reasonable accommodations to disabled persons, in order to afford such persons equal opportunity to use and enjoy dwelling as required by the Fair Housing Act amendments of 1988." And it goes on to say, "Any number of persons related by genetics, marriage, or legal adoption, including foster children and exchange students, a group of unrelated or related and unrelated, but not to exceed four total adults, and their related minor children." An adult would be 18 or older, and children obviously younger than 18. And items three and four are the two that were added last year as a result of changes in state law, state-licensed adult family homes, and that's the other one, state-licensed foster family homes and group care facilities, as defined in state law. And it goes on to say, "Regardless of the foregoing language, the term 'family' shall exclude individuals residing in halfway houses, crisis residential centers, as defined under state law, group homes licensed for juvenile offenders or other facilities, whether or not licensed by the state, where individuals are incarcerated or otherwise required to reside pursuant to court order under the supervision of paid staff and personnel." So that's the proposed definition of family, and in your packet, we've attached the legislative with the strike-through and underlining for the additions and deletions, so that it just was awfully messy to put it on the screen that way for the PowerPoint, so I decided not to do that. We're proposing a new definition, single housekeeping unit, and just what I, the definition of family that we've proposed, I've just mentioned that a key part of that is that the unrelated adults would be living together in a household as a single housekeeping unit, and so that would be defined as one household, where all the members have common access to and common use of all living, kitchen, and eating areas within the dwelling unit, and household activities and responsibilities, such as meals, chores, expenses, and maintenance of the premises, are shared or carried out according to a household plan or other customary method." And it goes on to the next page. "If the dwelling unit is rented and the household members occupy the unit under more than a single lease, they must be able to demonstrate the group is operating in a manner that is a functionally equivalent of a family in order to be considered a single housekeeping unit." That's the proposed definition of single housekeeping unit. We're proposing to amend the definition of dwelling, and again, the legislative version is in an attachment to your packet, but the definition would read as follows. "Dwelling means one or more habitable rooms, which are designed to be occupied by one family, with facilities for living, sleeping, not more than one kitchen unless it is clearly accessory, such as an outdoor grill, eating and sanitation, and in which all habitable rooms are internally accessible from within the dwelling." We would add a definition of kitchen, which means an identifiable area inside a dwelling for the cooking or preparation of food, including but not limited to all fixtures and functionally related appliances, including a stove, range, oven, microwave, or any combination thereof, a refrigerator or other food storage appliance, sink and a counter, or cupboards in proximity to each other. We got that from, I don't remember which jurisdiction, but it's somebody who had created that one fairly recently. We would amend the definition of rooming house, and the definition would, and you can see what is being stricken and how it would read, which is an entirely new definition, means non-owner-occupied dwelling that is subject to multiple leases, or in which rooms are offered for rent or lease on an individual-room basis. And one of the things that we're striking is that the existing definition makes reference to the City Housing Code, there is no longer a City Housing Code, so it made sense to strike that portion of the current definition. We're recommending the repeal of Section 39060 of the Code, which allows for up to two rumors in a single-family home in single-family zones. That's a little bit confusing when you look at that in light of the definition existing or proposed of family, and so what we were proposing to do is just eliminate that section of the Code and regulate the number of people in a household with the definition of family. Now, at our previous conversations about this, so a little over a year ago, probably, there was some discussion about whether or not five is, or excuse me, four is enough, should it be five, should it be more? There was talk about, gee, we're going to have more college students in town with the Washington State University campus expansion, and that maybe we should look at allowing for more than that. We're proposing, for purposes of discussion, this is not a recommendation, since it's only a workshop, we wanted to discuss this, the Bellevue definition of family. They've recently been through the process of this, and their code problem was generated by student housing, or students living in single-family homes, that people were going into neighborhoods and building very large housing structures, and each of them with a room rented to a student, and calling it a single-family dwelling, and so they had eight, 10, 12-bedroom houses in some of these single-family neighborhoods, and this is how Bellevue has decided to regulate it, and so I'll read this one. "Family means not more than four adult persons, unless all are related by blood, marriage, or legal adoption, living together as a single housekeeping unit. A group of related persons living in a household shall be considered a single housekeeping unit," and it goes on to say, "Provided a group of more than four unrelated adult persons living together in a dwelling unit may also be included within the definition of family if they demonstrate to the Director," and that would be the Community Development Director in Bellevue, "that they operate in a manner that is functionally equivalent to a family. Factors that shall be considered by the Director include whether the group of more than four unrelated persons," and I won't read all of these bullet points to you, but they're a set of criteria that they use that cover better than two pages' worth of this PowerPoint, that talk about how a functional family relates to one another in their definition, their alternative definition. One thing I wanted to point out on this page is the one that's got the red ink on it, that definition of family does not include a society for fraternity, sorority, lodge, organization, other group of students, or other individuals where the common living arrangement or basis for the establishment of the housekeeping unit is temporary. So the idea there with Bellevue's is that they want to create a stable neighborhood environment and not have occupancy that's changing frequently, which is fairly common with student housing. And the last part of the Bellevue definition is that the Director shall issue a written determination of whether a group of more than four unrelated adult persons are operating in a manner that is functionally equivalent to a family. That's an option, again, that's not a recommendation from staff, but we wanted to put it out there for purposes of discussion tonight. Practical effects of these code amendments would be that these changes in definitions and regulations would provide clarification for everybody who deals with this, which occasionally property owners, certainly tenants, often it's neighbors and code enforcement staff. It continues to provide reasonable accommodation for persons with disabilities, so they can enjoy housing, simplifies some outdated provisions in the zoning code. It has no change whatsoever in building safety regulations, no change to existing enforcement procedures, and the optional definition would allow consideration for more than four non-disabled adults. So again, the purpose of the workshop here, just review that one more time, we're hoping for feedback after you take public comments and have discussions that we can use to refine this, so you can have your next workshop or hearing to discuss these code changes. We're not on any timelines, so we're not, or deadlines, I should say, so we're not trying to push you into making a decision before you're comfortable, and so if that requires more meetings, so be it. So during the discussion, we hope that you'll have questions for us, take comments, hold a good discussion, and give us further direction. I think that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Alan. I did have two people that signed up. Do we want to take the public testimony, or do you have questions for staff prior to us doing that? Okay. So I had two people sign up for this agenda item, and then others can come up if they'd like, but if you haven't filled out one of these speaker sheets, please do so, and give it to Kathy. But the first one here is Amanda Mitchell, and if you, again, you can state your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
My name is Amanda Jean Mitchell, and I live at 3201 Whatmore Avenue here up in Everett. I just wrote, the ladies of Fresh Start Housing, we came together and we wrote a letter to kind of address the issue, so I'm just going to read that letter. "On the behalf of the ladies who reside at the Fresh Start Transitional Housing, we would like to interject our opinion on the current matter. We would like to express our gratitude for the positive impact that this program has done in our lives. All of the women in this house are being proactive in the community and our recovery. This house is providing a safe, clean environment for us to call home. We go to weekly meetings to keep the members of this household up to date. The board members provide a large amount of support and go out of their way to help us, gives us, give us tools that we can use in our daily lives. The positive and compassionate, as well as honest care that this house stands for is a blessing for each of the residents. Closing this house would prove to make a negative impact in our lives. Please consider all of this when making your decision. This house represents positive change, a sober household, and honest environment." Thank you.
Thank you. The next one I have, Jean Marie Trapp.
Thank you very much. I'm a little confused, so...
Can you make sure you state your address for the record as well? Thank you.
My name is Jean Marie Trapp, and I'm the Executive Director of Fresh Start Housing of Washington. Fresh Start has been an integral part of providing housing for the Everett area for over 10 years. It originally started as a faith-based organization. Its mission was to provide housing for men coming out Its mission was to provide housing for men coming out of incarceration and other jail, in our local jails. Five years ago, I assumed the 501(c)(3). We changed its mission, broadened its focus, and today we house roughly 14 people ongoing, divided equally between men and women in two homes. I refer to it as life recovery housing, a mixture of people whose lives have been adversely affected by criminality, drugs, alcohol, violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, domestic attacks, and mental health issues. We are not professionals. We are three women who have dedicated ourselves to the belief that in recovery, any solution, any new beginning starts at a place to call a home. I am deeply saddened that I have, I have a need to stand here before you and make a case that you will do no additional harm to our vulnerable, to our faceless, and to our voiceless. This is real, and this is very alarming. The attempt to undermine those of us who have worked silently, quietly, ethically, morally against a group of people with whom most would never care to even know, whose lives are seen only as a judgment, as a failure, as a blight, or as a rap sheet. I tell every person who walks across our threshold, glad you're here. Your past is on the porch. With whom do I get to meet? These are troubled people, their lives as complex as they are tragic. When you work with damaged people, it's not always pretty, and it's rarely neat. Recovery is messy. Transitional housing is exactly what that means, to move from one space to another, to another way of life, to another way of thinking, to another way of surviving, to another way of coping, to another way of loving, and another way of identifying. This takes time, and we provide it. We have our proven successes. We have cared, we have, we have people who have created new lives, got jobs, stabilized their mental health, reunited with their families, and maintained sobriety. And we have those who have not. It's the reality in which we live and in which we operate. We have to let them go, and sometimes we've watched them die. Some days I wonder if I would ever have the strength, the will, or the desire to climb that mountain. I call it heroic, and I let them know exactly how I think of them. I realize what is happening in a lot of this is a backlash from a lot of, from a very few bad players. You have no clear understanding of the important work that the majority of us provide in transitional housing. There are many who have no clear understanding of the fiscal requirements that we need in order to maintain on a shoestring existence. You have no appreciation for the critical part we play in stabilized housing for those in recovery. We simply cannot survive the model in which we would be regulated. The average income of a private pay individual in our home is $800 a month. We house those with incomes of less than $197 a month. We struggle every month to keep our promise of staying here and being there for them. It would be so easy, so simple, to just go back and not worry, and not give them a single afterthought as I sit in my very nice little suburban home in McElteo, but I can't and I won't. I will continue to stay up nights worrying about them and worrying about us. I will not let anybody force me to force them to be back homeless. I beg to have some very simple questions answered. Who wants this? Whose directive was it that to solve issues and the concerns before you would be to put language into city code and redefine the definition of a family of people living together, related or not? If the point, or if the honest truth is to really address and solve issues concerning transitional housing in Everett, then bring us together, put us at the table, help us create workable solutions and recommendations. Let us create a dialogue so people can appreciate the work we do and the people we serve. Let us share with you the things that we could use from you in order to do a better job and support us to broaden our reach and further our successes. No one wants dangerous housing. No one wants to have our vulnerable individuals be taken advantage of, and no one wants a neighborhood to fear us. What I dare to say, and consider this, and I am sorry if it feels abrupt, my truth, the truth I feel, there is no desire for solutions or ideas, but a simply non-imaginative and sinister solution that it is not in my backyard in Everett. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have another one, Michelle Westford.
Good evening. Michelle Westford, 2628 Grand Avenue, Everett, 98201. I am here tonight, I can proudly say that myself and my family own and operate clean and sober housing here in Everett. And after we're just, everybody knows this homelessness issue is a huge issue, and then we got people like Alan Geffen here proposing memorandums to come in and regulate family? This is, I am completely just, I'm at a loss for words for this. I'm very proud of what we do and the housing we have, and Alan has been on our tail since 2007 trying to shut us down. And it's not going to happen. And I'm not going to stand by and watch people that are in clean and sober housing and recovery and make $100 or $200 a month be regulated. You know, and you're showing the, I'm getting a little emotional because I know these people. And are you going to let these people come and live in your house? I mean, you got a room ready for them? We've been doing this. We've been dealing with people who've had these problems, and we have a solution. Now we want to go in regularly, make sure everybody's toothbrush is all in the right spot, and do, this is ridiculous, and a lawsuit waiting to happen. I also work in the film and entertainment industry, and this has inspired me, thank you, to make a documentary about discrimination and clean and sober housing. So continue on, but anybody that shows up at any of my properties, there's going to be right there that we're going to be filming, and my tenants, and my parents' tenants, and I'm sure anybody else in the clean and sober housing will be more than happy to be a part of that and give their testimony, but this is absolutely ridiculous. If, if you're so in love with Bellevue, go ahead and move there, because this is Everett, Washington, and the people that are here make up the fiber of Everett, Washington. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wanted to address the planning commission on this item? Okay. Seeing none. Commissioners, any questions to staff or comments?
Can I, can we see the slideshow presentation again? I just want to go back to some of the exceptions and lists of things that won't be affected. And just from my perspective, like, it is a priority, at least from mine, have, you know, to make sure there is a space for healing, and I'm sure that amongst all the commissioners here, there is a deep understanding of the necessity, as in with our involvement with all the, with working with the issue of homelessness. So there is, to the people out there, I tell you that there is an understanding, a sympathy and an understanding of the need for the space of healing and space for housing, so.
I believe it's also in your packet there.
Yeah, yeah.
Alan, let me ask a quick question. So I think what you were commenting on earlier is that addiction is considered a disability. And so the number of unrelated adults in a house, under Fair Housing, they're protected under Fair Housing, am I correct? Do you understand what I'm asking here?
Recovering drug and alcohol abusers are considered disabled under the Fair Housing Act amendments, and therefore the definition of family limiting it to four would not apply to disabled. There's a reasonable accommodation process, and that is something that allows up to any number that is reasonable. And when we look at reasonable accommodation, we have to look at, you know, the conditions that that house may have based on the number of people that are proposed to live there, if there's adequate egress and, you know, buildings, basic building safety codes are being met.
That's a current, that's, sorry, Commissioner, that's currently in code, is that correct? The reasonable accommodation provisions?
Well, accommodation is not in code, it's in law under the Federal Fair Housing Act amendments. We've established a process where we review requests for reasonable accommodation.
Just, let me follow up. Do, so if you have a clean and sober or transitional housing, do you have to go through a permitting? Is there a local permitting process? Is it a special use permit, or how are those regulated?
Under the current definition, up to eight disabled individuals can live together and meet the definition of family. The reasonable accommodation process is what we use when there are more than eight. The proposed definition doesn't put a number on number of disabled, it just says any, any, the definition shall not be applied if it would deny reasonable accommodation for disabled individuals. So it changes that current definition.
And I want to make one comment here, because I'm just kind of going down a hole here. It's unfortunate because I think defining family is a relic of the past, and it's basically social commentary. And we're struggling, I mean, because there's a million ways out there that a lot of people from a social perspective define family. I'm sure a lot of people here live in transitional housing, and the person in the room next to them is their brother or their sister. So that's a struggle that we have and that, that we're trying to deal with here. But at the same time, as a local jurisdiction, in my opinion, you have to make sure the physical characteristics of the structure, of the use of the property and characteristics with the neighboring units is compatible. And that's been demonstrated over and over again in case law, that those considerations, you know, the local jurisdiction has a responsibility. So I, we are struggling with the definition of family. It is one of those things, I believe that the Connecticut case is actually a constitutional challenge under the right to privacy because it's specifically attacking what is the definition of family. And so I want to make it clear, in my opinion, we are not saying that this is what a family is for people. What we are trying to figure out is, based on a particular land use, what is reasonable in terms of the physical use of a property based on the characteristics, and our, you know, parking, noise, things of that nature. So I just kind of wanted to make that commentary. It is a struggle, and hopefully we'll have a good discussion on that.
As a follow-up to your question about the process for reasonable accommodation, is there a notice to the neighborhood in that process, and is there an appeal to a decision that's made?
No, there is no notice, and there is, anything that, any determination by the city is subject to an appeal, but there is no notice provided to the neighborhood, and that's because under the Federal Fair Housing Act amendments, our attorneys felt that that was going above and beyond what we were allowed or should be doing in terms of considering housing for disabled individuals. Providing notice, we don't do that for other families, so no matter what the number of people that live, you know, if they're all related, so we can't really, the, under the Federal Fair Housing Act, require a notice. Our attorneys have consulted with expert attorneys who have worked for the Department of Justice and litigate this issue from time to time, and that's the advice that we've been given.
But, but the city could elect to have a kind of a courtesy notice or a listing of pending applications so people could kind of see what's going on in their neighborhood?
Probably not for reasonable accommodation.
Okay. And then the appeal, would that be to the city council, or be that a legal appeal through the courts?
Hearing examiner, and then if anybody wanted to appeal decision of the hearing examiner, that would be to Superior Court.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. George?
Specific question about, there's no page number on it, but it's the option one recommended, bottom of the page, it says, it was basically, family shall exclude individuals residing in halfway houses, crisis centers, crisis residential centers, as defined in RCW 7415020. I know I could look this up, but when I think of a crisis residential center, I think of a battered women's shelter, or a rape crisis center. Is that what we're talking about here?
Again, I haven't, I haven't reviewed that definition in a while, but the crisis residential centers would include something like a battered women's shelter, and we do have regulations that do allow for larger facilities like this. We've even had them in single-family homes and single-family zones in the past. The group that used to, a group that operates DBS, Domestic Violence Services, has grown into a much larger facility, and we found a place for them, but now we've actually funded homes in single-family zones for domestic violence shelters.
But that, but that, but it's indicated as an exclusion here.
Right, but there's another process.
Right. I think it really bothered, you know, I was, I was kind of going through your presentation, and I really, I was really, I thought you really diligently went through and tried to answer all the, all the questions, but I'm, you know, after hearing a little bit of testimony from the public, and I, I'm no more comfortable with it now than I was a year ago, you know. I think that when you start regulating the use of a term like family, which is, in my mind, just like trying to define marriage, you know, it's kind of a similar kind of thing. You're using a word to control, you know, regulating the word in order to regulate the people. You know, to me, it's sort of a, I don't know, it seems a little bit sneaky at best. I think if you just, you know, if, if what you're trying to do is to stop too many people from living in a house, you should just come out and say it, you know, if that's what the problem is. But, you know, putting a term like family, I, I don't know, it just seems like there's, it sort of implies there's something virtuous or moral here, and I don't really see that. It seems like it's kind of, kind of, kind of vindictive, you know, it's kind of trying to exclude, you know, it's like, okay, some people complain they don't want group homes in their neighborhood, so they're saying, okay, well, this is what a family is. You're a fam, this group over here, they're a family, this group over here, they're not a family. I don't really, honestly, I don't feel that it's in, you know, I don't think it's our place to, to define what a family is, you know, and I don't really think, I'd say, well, we have no business doing that, you know, and nobody has any business asking us to do that. On the other hand, we can always say no. So it's okay to ask, but I, myself, I'm going to participate in this because I would, my inclination would be that any attempt to narrow the definition would, I would resist that, you know, because, you know, the definition of family is certainly different from what it was even, you know, 20 years ago, you know, just like the definition of marriage. I don't think we should, you know, I suppose if there's at a state level, if it was clear cut, you know, cut and dried, you know, then we could just adopt that language, but it doesn't appear to be. It seems like we're trying to introduce this locally, for whatever reason, and I kind of wonder about where it's coming from.
Well, if I can attempt to answer just a brief part of that, we have a current definition of family. It's got numerical definition within that. What we're proposing to do is to actually clarify that and eliminate any reference to a numerical limitation on disabled individuals. If you prefer not to have a definition of family, then we need to figure out, I guess, another, either how to repeal the definition and get at what we're, what the code regulates, which is in single-family zones in particular, the transient nature of, for example, rooming houses, or rentals that, you know, have people living in, you know, some substandard housing conditions, and we still have building codes that can enforce on a lot of that, but the, just about every city in the country has a definition for family and regulates household size based upon that. There's, it's being litigated, as, as we mentioned, in some jurisdictions and different There's, it's being litigated as, as we mentioned in some jurisdictions and different communities probably have different ways of regulating it. Bellevue, for example, decided that they wouldn't allow for some additional consideration above a number of four. And so that's one example. But if we're not going to have a definition of family, then I guess we'll have to come up with a different way to address the issues that I've just described as the problems we're trying to address.
Thank you.
If I can just kind of raise a question, I think, you know, a lot of interesting points have been brought up and maybe we're trying to, maybe we're approaching this solutional, maybe we're just approaching this solution wrong. We're trying to use redefining family to attach, to tackle this issue and figure out how many people should be living with housing. But I think maybe since there's so many things now in flux and what we want to figure out, maybe we should kind of, as a commission, figure out what are our, what are our priorities for housing to do? Like what do we want it to do? And then kind of set the vision, set the standard, then kind of work back from there instead of trying to have amend this, what we have right here. I would just love to get some feedback and thoughts on that because, you know, if we want to say housing needs to provide a safe space, if we want housing to be able to, you know, be a place that's conformed with the building and, you know, isn't creating an unsafe environment and, you know, what do we want the housing to do? Maybe we can start that and work our way backwards.
I think that's a really big pot to stir in. That's very, very big. And I think I hear what Alan is requesting, which is basically, we need to update this according to state mandates to accommodate the, the disability portion of this. But I think what I was saying is, and I think what we're finding across the nation is the definition of family in zoning codes is starting to be challenged as part of the sharing economy, Airbnb, the, the social definition of family and things. So it is a very, very big conversation. But I think what you're, we're trying to accomplish is not to dramatically alter the definition tonight, but to address that there have been changes at the state level and we need to consider and accommodate those. Is that my understanding?
Not, not the, this is not a mandate from the state.
It's fair housing.
We have, yeah, fair, federal law that we have to comply with.
We have to comply with federal housing.
And what we're trying to do is provide some clarifications in the current definition.
Right, right. In order to be in compliance with the Fair Housing Act.
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner.
Thank you. I, I think if we, we get in a situation where we try to meld a code provision around a particular applicant, you always kind of get yourself in trouble eventually. But I think the testimony tonight from Fresh Start has provided some valuable information as to what kind of the, the new community needs are out there and how they're being satisfied. So I guess my question is, in their particular situation, is there something about the proposal that we have before us that would make them non-compliant or restrict their activities? Because I understand that they had, I think the testimony was seven individuals housed in two structures. So that's seven per structure and you mentioned eight. So is, am I reading it right that?
Well, I didn't, I didn't get the, the numbers. I heard 14 and two houses, but I don't know if that's seven and seven. But at any rate, the, if it's disabled, housing for disabled, there is no limit on the number provided that the accommodation is reasonable. And reasonable includes reasonable for the tenants of that, that housing as well as reasonable for the neighborhood in which it's located. And so there's a, there's a list of criteria that I put in your staff report that talks about how we evaluate a request for reasonable accommodation and we've never denied one. There's just, we've, in some cases, had to limit the number because what they were proposing was, in one example, they were going to take out the kitchen and the dining room and, and the living room and make it all bedrooms. Well, you need a kitchen, you need a dining room, you need a living room, you know? And so we had to reduce the number that that particular applicant had proposed. In another case, applicant was using an internal, internal room of the house with no emergency egress through windows. There were no windows and so, you know, it didn't meet building codes. And so we reduced the, the number that were allowed there to, you know, by a small reduction. But they still were able to get reasonable accommodation and it's working to this day for them.
So it appears that there is a process and there would be a process.
Right. For, for.
Available.
Yeah, and so for the Fresh Start example, they would qualify perfectly under the definition that we're, we're talking about. It's not that we're trying to put anybody out on the street. It's not, that's not what is motivating this. What, what's motivating this is, again, to create a better definition that deals with the disabled situation better than our current code and then get at the, the rooming, the illegal rooming house situations. And so that's really the two main parts of the purpose of the code amendments.
And like I said, I, I think it's, we go down the wrong path where we try to create a code to match a particular situation. And obviously it's a city council decision. They just look for our recommendation from our perspective, but I think it was helpful to hear that testimony.
Commissioner, please do. Just a second. Commissioner, go ahead.
Go ahead.
You going to finish something or start something new?
I was just going to comment. I think that this, this amendment actually accommodates what they're doing. It makes it, I mean, I mean, so it's actually an improvement for these transitional housings. It, it specifically is there accommodating them.
Correct. Yeah.
I think the previous conversations about a family or a family and, and I heard the testimony tonight, but, you know, what about the students? We, you know, how does this apply to the student housing? And, and even, I mean, the, the world has changed and the city of Everett has changed and the demographics have changed and a lot of, right down in Riverfront, they have some, you know, six-plus bedroom houses being built today because some nationalities that is, you know, that's customarily, that, that's part of their family tradition. And so it, if I, if I heard you correctly, you're talking about taking the numbers out and not having a number? Or did I miss, did I miss something there?
Now, for unrelated, it would still be four. It doesn't change that. It would just, it takes away the number related to disabled.
Thank you.
And for people who are related, there is no limit. And so, for example, the extended families with the large houses that you just mentioned, yeah, there is no number for people that are related.
And so this would help somebody from an investor going in and buying three or four of those new houses and then using them for disability purposes or, or other things?
Well, if they were for disabled, again, the reasonable accommodation process would allow for that. If it was just a rooming house or the case like Bellevue had with somebody going in and building big houses with eight or 12 bedrooms in it and renting them individually to students, that really is not a single-family dwelling. That's student housing or dormitory or a multifamily building.
Yeah, that was clarification because I think this is all good conversation. It's just family's a big word.
Question for you, Alan. The, I, I know this has a lot to do with the bad players in the community or slum lords or whatever you want to call them. And I think there's a, in, in all communities, there's a difficulty in having access to these properties. Would this definition helping access to actually implement the building codes or property maintenance codes for, you know, they have, and I think Everett's adopted that where there's only a room can accommodate so many people, it has to be so many square feet and all of those things and have emergency access and all that. Are we seeing that we're, would this allow the city to actually be able to inspect these types of facilities or to, to that? I'm just wondering if there's another layer to this that I'm, I'm not catching.
Well, we're, the amendments to the zoning code do not affect our building or property maintenance codes. Property maintenance codes do not give the city the ability to go into somebody's property without their permission or a court order. And nothing is proposed to change in that regard.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Zlinski.
Some of the earlier discussion suggested maybe thinking out of the box a little and going back to, do we need a definition of family in the code? Might be worthwhile to just give us a little background on why we need a definition of family in the code. You mentioned that we no longer have a housing code. My recollection of the housing codes were that they were primarily designed to address overcrowding in structures. If this is kind of a remnant of those codes, maybe we don't need a definition of family. But if we only, if we need a definition of something, if it's going to be household rather than family, I mean, we're kind of in the same box again. But it might be worthwhile to just think a little bit about what happened if we got rid of the definition entirely, just as basis for why we need it, as a support for why we need it.
Good question. Commissioner Dunn.
So can you clarify whether or not transitional housing would be affected by this? Because I understand that in the proposed amendment, that the term family excludes individuals residing in halfway houses, crisis residential centers, and then as defined by the state, state law. Would transitional housing be included? Because homelessness is not a disability.
No, so now depending upon everybody's definition of transitional, like everybody's definition of family, I suppose everybody has a little bit different idea. If transitional housing is so to get people out of homeless conditions into housing, that probably would be our definition of supportive housing that we went through an amendment process for. And so we do make, have, have made provision for that. If somebody wants to build supportive housing, there are a number of zones in which that can go. Not in single-family zones, however, unless it's on publicly owned land. And so if that's what you meant by transitional housing, that's our current regulation.
Okay. Yeah, because I'm curious because there's a lot of confused faces behind you, which you can't see. But so I'm, I'm trying to understand if this would impact Fresh Start and their home.
My understanding is that Fresh Start is, and I'm happy to be corrected if I get this wrong, but housing people who are recovering from drug and alcohol abuse. And if, if that's the case, then they'd be considered disabled and eligible for the reasonable accommodation. And this definition wouldn't affect their ability to stay in housing.
So it sounds like they're not all recovering drug and alcoholics, drug and alcohol. So they wouldn't be disabled.
And so it's, at the 3201 Wetmore address is a multifamily zone and I don't have my code book in front of me here, but, you know, you can have rooming houses in the multifamily zone. You can have multiple-family housing, higher-density buildings in, in those R3, R4, R5 zone neighborhoods. And I think that's probably an R5 zone, you know, which is our highest density residential zone. And so it's perfectly appropriate in that neighborhood for, you know, having more than a single family in a, in a building. Again, they still, even if they were in a single-family zone, it sounds like they'd probably be eligible. I don't know enough about their mission and their, the nature of their tenants to, to know if they're totally qualified for the disability. But, you know, where they are would appear to be a fine location for them under the zoning.
Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Zlinski.
Alan, do such facilities, are they required to have a business license?
No. Disabled housing is not considered a business. It's considered housing and they, they're not required to have a business license. And rental housing landlords are not required to have a business license for, for rental housing.
So, so how does the city know where such type of facilities are located and have the opportunity to inspect them to make sure that they do satisfy building code, fire code and other kind of code requirements?
One of two ways. Either they would come to us and say, hey, we have more than four unrelated adults. We have disabled people living together. We are, we're requesting reasonable accommodation. Or the more frequent is that there's a complaint from a neighbor or first responders go to aid call and find that they have oftentimes housing that's been converted, attics, basements, things that really don't provide for safe egress for an emergency situations. And those are frequently then come to the attention of our code enforcement officers.
It seems to me that that's maybe the crux of the situation is there needs to be a process where the city can be involved to at least understand what type of facilities and services are out there and to ensure that they are being conducted in a safe manner. So I don't know if this is a way to, to get at that, but, you know, it'd be kind of interesting to know how many are out there in the city that we, nobody knows about.
We have no idea.
Yeah.
Commissioner Adams.
Obviously with the multi moving parts with multifamily and how it applies in terms of different contexts, and this may not be easy to do, but if we talk about this again soon, I think it'd be helpful to have a chart. And I'm not sure exactly what that looks like yet, but I, I think I struggle a lot with how this, how these provisions apply to the other provisions in the code in each context, right? And so if to some degree to think about it from a bigger picture perspective, you know, if we're talking about disabled housing or if we're talking about the multifamily zone versus the single-family zone, if there's some way to create, and I don't mean to create a huge matrix here, but some sort of context that allows for us to more easily go through it and figure out what context we're talking about and what applies and doesn't. I think you've done a great job trying to put that together, but I think you have a really difficult job right now to answer hypotheticals that really call into other parts of the code, you know, the questions that we're asking.
And frankly, that would just be our residential use tables in our code where you can look at every term that is associated with the residential use and see what zones, those various terms are either allowed or prohibited in. And if you need clarification, we go to the definition, which is one of the reasons why we're doing this is to, you know, we talk about single-family dwellings, we talk about multiple-family dwellings. So what is a family? And that's why we have a definition. You know, we have single-family attached, we have single-family detached, we have multiple-family. We have various forms of rental housing that, rooming houses and the places where they are allowed and places where they're not allowed. And so there's a full gamut of housing that's allowed and, and just in some zones, it's treated differently than in other zones.
Good point. If we could still pull that out though, in terms of allowing.
We can, happy to do that.
Okay.
Happy to do that.
And just to piggyback on Commissioner Adams, if those of you in the audience that supply this kind of housing can send Alan, you know, what your model is and what you're accommodating, that way it would give at least the commission an opportunity to understand whether or not this definition would make you legally illegal and so we can have that discussion. So if you could email that to Alan, that would be very beneficial to us.
Without being interrupted, I apologize. Our women's house, yes, does it sit at 3201? House is at 2305 Baker. So it is in.
If we could invite her up to the microphone.
Can you, you're going to, can you come up and, and address the commission again and so we can get it all on the record so Kathy doesn't have to?
The women's house does sit at 3201 Wetmore. And so it would be in that higher density, it's just down the street. But our men's house is at 2305 Baker. So it would be in the heart of the residential area. So then it would be potentially out of your zoning and be, could be vulnerable. The issue we have is, is that the people we, you know, we are transitioned, we don't always have people that have drug and alcohol issues. Sometimes we have people that are just coming straight out of the penitentiary. We don't really know their histories. We don't often know and we rely heavily on the DOC because for us, especially being just three, you know, moms who volunteer our time, literally, we rely a lot on them because they have, they have a bigger shtick than we do. I can play a lot of guilt, but they, they have a bigger shtick. I can play a lot of guilt, but they have a bigger stick. So that's the, that's the issue because it's always changing sometimes. And to be quite truthful, we don't like to have a mix of all one problem, if that sounds a little coarse. But it's better to have people that have several addiction issues. Maybe you have some criminal histories, maybe you have some mental health issues because then they don't sort of conglomerate together. And then they, and we share rooms because we don't want people to isolate. I don't want somebody in a room by them, all them, by themselves that can shut the door and then nobody knows what's going on. So we pair people up so they have, not only do they have a friend, they can build a relationship, but they have some accountability. And it works. And so individualized housing for some seems like a great idea. But from our perspective, it is actually the worst idea because we don't live there. They create their own home, they create their own environment. They become responsible for the nature and the, of what their family looks like. And it does morph into a family, not always functional. We work towards it, but it does work. Just like everybody else's family. I hope that answers the question anyway. But we're happy to share whatever information you want to see. We're happy to show you our homes, you know. We want to be a part of this community and have been.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Commissioner Dunn?
You know, this has been a really interesting conversation. In my view, we're nowhere ready to kind of put something together or give you some overall direction. And it seems to me we just need some more thinking time to take in the testimony we've heard tonight and kind of understand how, what's in the proposals and bring it back to another meeting. I mean, that's what I was suggesting.
Yeah, so Alan's actually looking for a direction on, we have from Commissioner Adams about matrices that shows the allowed uses and the zones. Is there anything additional that you'd like staff to look at and bring back on this topic as well?
I do. I actually, so instead of, again, and I go back to family is kind of a relic of previous coding, zoning code policy and how we defined it. Is there a way that we could perhaps tie? Because what we're trying to do is make sure these units, from a physical perspective, are safe. You know, that they can accommodate people, that emergency crews can get into them if they need to get into them. And that they're, you know, from a land use perspective, accommodating the people they need to accommodate in these units. So is there a way, based on square footage? Is there a way where we're not really getting into the social definition of family? But what we're doing for single-family units is basing how many adults can be there on square footage, on, you know, character, similar to the building code. I know that we already have a lot of this through the building code. But can we focus what this type of land use and building is supposed to be doing and tie it to, you know, a quantifiable? I think, I don't know if I'm making sense.
I can, I can, what I'll have to do is have a conversation with the building official, because I don't understand their codes as well as they do, obviously, and bring that information back rather than try to recite what I think I remember.
Rational accommodation isn't just about a disabled person. It's about a person. I mean, is this habitat reasonable to accommodate the occupancy of this adult? So that's what I'm trying to get at is how many people can be in this unit? And how can you quantify that without getting into kind of a social discussion of what the relationship is? I mean, yes, cohesion in terms of, you know, sitting together and having food, those type of things. But I'm just trying to kind of make it as simple and about, you know, do you have enough parking? Do you have enough, you know, you don't want to have too much noise or too much, you know, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, and I believe in the International Building Code, as Alan was saying, that there are specifics to, for what a household or a house or home.
A housing unit. I mean, I think the definition of a housing unit should, if we can focus on what that is for this particular zone, I think it's going to be more palatable to what we're trying to accomplish in terms of the nature and character of the neighborhood.
And similar to what Commissioner Zelensky said, is that, you know, every jurisdiction defines it differently, such as, you know, Marysville's household, you know, Everett's family. So I mean, it could be a different term in a different community. So, you know, balancing that, is it necessary, is it not necessary? So I thought that was a great question as well, yes.
I think, you know, there are some very good things happening, some very positive things happening. You know, the Streets Initiative, finding ways to get homeless people off the street, finding alternative housing situations for, for people who otherwise wouldn't be able to find them. And we have to kind of keep, you know, as Commissioner Zelensky said, thinking out of the box and keep searching for those new, new situations. And there's, there are things happening here that have been here for a long time. People have been working, you know, in recovery and helping others to find, you know, sobriety. And we have to keep, we have to keep trying to make, make those possible, keep those things happening. And, you know, obviously, you know, the world is running out of resources and we're going to have to find, you know, places for people to live that aren't, you know, we can't just keep, you know, expanding out, sprawling out into the countryside. We have to kind of find ways to find, make better use of the properties that we have, you know. Because obviously, you know, we don't want to keep just building and building and building. I mean, we have to limit our size and, but we have to kind of, there's going to, you know, the population's going to keep growing. So, you know, we have to keep sort of reevaluating, you know, the land use code and kind of find ways to sort of accept these, these good, positive things that are happening and have been happening for a long time, you know. And obviously, when you, you're going to hear, you're going to hear complaints and you're going to hear people that aren't happy with the way, you know, what's happening in their neighbor's property. Obviously, those are the ones you're going to, they're going to be squeaking the loudest, you know. But a lot of the good stuff that's happening out there in the community, nobody hears about it. It's all happening anonymously, you know. So I just want to, you know, I think I was a little harsh, but I have to say, you know, I think we have, we're really sort of, we're at the forefront, you know, with the Streets Initiative. And we're like, the whole nation is looking at us and saying, wow, they figured out how to, you know, get homeless people off the street. They're not just carting them out to the city limits and dumping them, you know. We're finding ways to help these people, you know, because these people, they're us. I mean, they're our neighbors, they're citizens, you know. So we have to find places for them, you know. And we have to be, we have to be generous and we have to be forgiving and we have to be tolerant. So, you know, that's, those are the virtues that I believe that we stand for. So I'm trying to, trying to throw a little bit of something positive in there. So don't leave a bad taste in your mouth, so.
Commissioner Dunn?
Taking a bit of a left turn here and going back to students, I just would love to get some more feedback, excuse me, from staff on how other, on how other municipalities that are more, that deal with more college students than Bellevue does have, what language they use in their code and how they deal with houses that are used by students. I remember, excuse me. Tacoma might be a good one. I remember like when I went to the University of Washington, one of the big challenges we had in the U District was we had very large old homes that were turned into chop houses. And there was physical space that was made unsafe for students to live in. But at the same time, I know I, going back to, one of the things that the director would have to consider is whether or not the arrangement constitutes a transient living. I mean, I know I moved every single year in college because I was chasing the cheaper rent. And so, you know, it'd be nice to see how other municipalities tackle that. And on a quick aside note, if we, and the notion of place-making that is always kind of coming up, I think, kind of getting a collegiate feel to a certain part of the town would also be beneficial in creating kind of a neighborhood feel around that university area and help attract students as well. So love to get some feedback, how other municipalities tackle that issue.
Commissioner Dunn?
Also some feedback on the number four. It seems like that's an arbitrary number. So is there an increase in neighborhood complaints if there's five unrelated adults? So if there's that same restriction with the number four? Because I like the idea of just having household or number of bedrooms or living space instead of a number.
I think the challenge is you can convert the number four to some other square footage or occupancy load or some, it's always going to be a multiplication process and mathematical thing that gets back to four or five or six. So, I mean, we can look for other terms, but it's going to get back to a number. I, and I don't see a problem with the proposals put together, the number four, the other numbers that are in here. But I am really curious as to, and I know the problem is we don't know where they are. And if we don't know where they are, then we don't know what kind of services are actually being provided out there from, by private groups. And so I don't know how we get our hands around whether or not a code provision that we come up with kind of satisfies and addresses the need and the services in the community.
Frankly, city enforcement staff is not concerned about the ones we don't know about. Because whatever the number is, they're not a problem because we don't know about them. The problem is with the ones that it kind of comes down to how they function, how they behave, whether it's the tenants or the landlord and how they maintain their properties. We know about the bad ones because there's been a problem that has come to our attention. I'm a little reluctant to want to do the inventory work to try to figure out how many group homes there are out there, or should I say, you know, disabled homes or, you know, more than four unrelated individuals living in a house? Because, you know, we've got a lot better things to do than worry about a number. It's just one of the tools that we have to work with when we have problems that, and whether four is the magic number or some other number is the perfect number. There's no perfect number, but it really has to do with how the landlords manage their properties or how the tenants behave. And, you know, that gets down to how well, usually the tenants are screened or the properties are managed.
So those that exist out there today, if a new code provision was adopted by the city council, say the first of the year, would they have a, would they be grandfathered and have a non-conforming right to continue? Or would they all have to come into compliance within a certain timeframe?
Well, the number is four right now. So if we went down to three, then I guess we'd worry about grandfathering. But if you kept it at four or you increased the number, then there wouldn't be a problem with the existing ones that.
And there wouldn't be a problem with the definitions that we have, other than the number four.
Pardon me?
There wouldn't be a problem with any of the other definition changes.
I don't think so, yeah. Rooming house, in most cases, the rooming houses, we don't have people applying for rooming houses because typically the parking requirement is greater than they can fit on a lot if they're converting an existing house to a rooming house. And so most of them that we learn about are illegal because they've done it without permits, don't meet the standards for parking, and frequently other building codes.
Alan, one more thing to, I know you've got a lot here that we've asked to provide you, but maybe the understanding of the commission of who would be eligible for, for fair housing, what those, what those groups are, I think would, would help the commission in reviewing this as well.
Sure, we can, we can provide more information about that.
Thank you. Well, any other comments for staff? Alan, do you have enough to?
I've got enough, I don't think.
To have another conversation in the future?
Won't be bringing this back anytime real soon. I would, would just add that as a result of the newspaper article that brought all the folks out to the city council meeting a month or so back, we are having a meeting with one of the housing operators to proactively, you know, work, work with them to figure out how we can make this work for the providers and for the building safety, public safety element that we're trying to create more consistency with.
Is that going to be a staff meeting with those or is that like a public?
Yes, no, just a staff to property owner meetings.
Okay, thank you. I guess that moves us on to Metro Everett.
Go get some water, take a little break here, I'll be right back.
Thanks, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.
You missed it up here.
This is the one I came for.
You're popular, Alan. David's got to work on his popularity.
All right, thank you. David Sullheim, Long Range Planning Manager. And for a completely different subject, a little twist here from down the details of family to Metro Everett. So it's just a recollection. Metro Everett, large area includes all of downtown Everett Station, includes some of the surrounding residential areas, goes up to Everett High School, down to Brown Bear Car Wash, Providence South Campus, out to I-5 into the railroad. Really wanted to talk about three, three particular areas tonight. And in particular, any kind of feedback that you might have on some of the incentives. And as you recall, when we had this conversation a little while back about the development impact fees and the, the, what we had in that package to defer the impact fees for single-family homes. We talked about coming back on Metro Everett. And so this is the beginning of that conversation. And again, all these three areas that we're having here, this is the beginning of the rollout of this conversation. So we did do basically the same presentation to the city council last week, doing it with you folks tonight. At the end, we're going to have a public meeting on this on October 6th in open house. So this is just really the beginning of the conversation. The three areas that we're really focusing on now is the incentives, place-making at Hewitt Avenue, and then the light rail station planning at Everett Station. So when we looked at incentives for this, we've been working with kind of an interdepartmental work group to kind of work through some of these issues along with the input that we've gotten from the public so far. And what we thought is, what was really important for us to do was to sit there and really focus in on what is it that we think we need development incentives that if we didn't have these incentives, we wouldn't get the results that we want or perhaps as fast as we want. So some things will happen naturally kind of thing, but other things may not happen as quick. So these are kind of our goals as we start crafting an incentive package that we've, we've drafted for a proposal. The first was adding a thousand units of market rate housing and put a time period of seven years. So in our conversations we've had is that, again, to kind of create an active environment in the metro area, is that the market rate housing would make a big difference here because it would create a lot more presence within the area. And, and it would bring some of the income, it would help support businesses, a whole bunch of activities within the metro area. And so we kind of put a time period on there. And most of this is really, is a financial incentive. And we'll walk through the financial incentives is that really rents here in Everett are not the same as they are in Seattle, but our construction costs are the same as they are in Seattle. And so we see a lot of the incentives for doing the market rate housing as probably being a financial incentive package. The second was increasing the housing inventory for low-income households. As we just, you know, had this conversation here too, is that, you know, we have an existing deficit and we have continued needs for housing for the low-income population. It creates transit-oriented development. We have great transit service within this area, proposal for light rail coming in, big transit hub. But we haven't really seen some of that development around some of this yet. And so the idea of how do we get more of that transit-oriented development? Similarly, reducing travel by single-occupant vehicles. I think at the last meeting, we had the conversation, the report on the greenhouse gases. And so that's one of the big targets, goals to reduce carbon in our atmosphere is to reduce the amount of vehicle miles traveled by single-occupant vehicles. Increasing employment, again, in activity within the area. And then it kind of almost an umbrella is, is creating the active, safe, and clean area. So those are the goals that we kind of had to kind of craft some of the development incentives. existing city financial incentives, to create new city financial incentives, and develop new regulatory incentives. And so we'll walk through some of those really quick. First is, uh, an expansion of existing financial incentives, the multifamily tax exemption program. This is a, uh, deferral of eight to twelve years of property taxes for new multifamily construction. Uh, this is in a lot of the metro area, Metro Everett area, but not everywhere. Um, so, uh, it includes, uh, quite a bit of the area, but there are some pockets within, uh, the metro area that is not included. The second is transportation impact fee reduction area. Right now, we have an automatic deduction for transportation impact fees of twenty-five percent in downtown, in the B-three zone, but we don't have it in Everett Station, right around the transit, uh, hub. And so, looking at expanding that automatic deferral, uh, to all the Metro Everett, um, most developers actually do get a reduction if they come in with a transportation plan, but then they have to spend money to do, to show how they'll have, uh, less impact, and so this is one kind of a, uh, easy thing to actually have a automatic reduction, uh, around Everett Station that, uh, is enjoyed in downtown area. Impact fee deferral program, again, we just did that one for the single-family, uh, have a specific, uh, proposal in here for more high-density development, uh, within the metro area to defer those impact fees. That's, uh, it's a financial incentive, we still get the funds, we just don't get it at the time of, uh, the building permit being issued. And when we did that impact fee deferral, we also had an eighty percent exemption for low-income housing for impact fees, uh, and so the proposal is to also do the utility connections, uh, the sewer and water connections for low-income housing of, of eighty percent there. The city has a job tax credit program, uh, but it's only eligible for those jobs, uh, when you create fifty or more jobs. And so, uh, it's really not a small business, uh, thing at fifty jobs, and so we're, uh, looking at a proposal where that would start at ten jobs within the metro area, ten full-time jobs. And so, those are expansion of existing financial incentives. So some new financial incentives, uh, right now, we do collect, uh, some funds for one percent for art, a lot of the public art that, uh, was in, uh, in town, but, uh, we have some exemptions, uh, there, so there's actually the potential to, um, have more funding that, that comes in to, again, create activity and more place, sense of place, uh, placemaking within, uh, the Metro Everett area. One tool under state law that we have, and actually Everett used it, uh, up on the north end for the smelter property, uh, is a community renewal area to address blight. It actually is not potentially a new financial incentive, but we still put it in this category, because it may bring some resources with it. It may bring, uh, focus of resources, uh, within, uh, the city, uh, but it also might be something that grant funding sources that we go after would do, uh, would look at the, and so, community renewal areas for us to identify an area within, uh, the metro area that really needs renewal. And, uh, I think you can walk around and see some areas, and we could all probably take a map and draw a boundary, uh, and maybe it'd end up being the same boundary, but just to look at that, you have to develop a community renewal plan, uh, but it provides that tool, and so to look at that, and so we're having some conversations about, uh, designating that area. Uh, have had some conversations with the City of Olympia that's used that tool more recently, and, uh, having some, uh, ideas of going down and visiting them and kind of understanding how that has worked for them, and some, uh, pros and cons for that. Uh, one is, uh, pedestrian connections is a big issue, so increasing some funding for pedestrian paths, particularly, uh, the pedestrian path from Everett Station to Xfinity Arena in downtown. Uh, it's a pathway that is in, uh, great need of improvement, uh, should I say. Um, so you walk that, uh, that pathway, uh, little signs that I told council probably about the size of this, that tells you, you know, you're on the path to Xfinity Arena, and, uh, and, uh, some very narrow pathways that kind of end in nowhere at times, so. Uh, for affordable housing, uh, grants and funds, looking at some other funding sources, one is a local housing levy, uh, potential, this is one of the things that was in the, uh, mayor's recommendations for the Community Streets Initiative, uh, local funding to, uh, be able to create, uh, new affordable housing for low-income. Another thing that's out of the Puget Sound Regional Council, uh, it's called the Regional Equitable Development Initiative, which is low-income housing around, uh, for transit-oriented development in particular, so, looking at that. So regulatory incentives, uh, three of them that we're looking at is reducing parking. We actually have pretty good reductions already, and so one of the conversations is to reduce them even more, uh, in some areas. And, uh, so that, uh, looking at that as an option. Uh, density, uh, heights and floor area ratios, uh, to, uh, have those, uh, potentially increased, and a lot of these, uh, some of the conversations about allowing these increases, uh, but in exchange for something. So, uh, if we look at, uh, property that has, uh, increases, that we'd get some other public benefit perhaps out of that, so we'd have some, some conversations, uh, about that and, and finding that right mix. And then, uh, finally is that, uh, right now, we have requirements of multifamily development that mandates some recreation open space, uh, on the property. It, it actually kinda works contrary at times for the density that we really want to achieve, and some ideas that they could contribute, uh, to some public open space instead of having it, uh, onsite, so that would be kind of a regulatory, uh, incentive or, uh, there. A lot of these things in here, like reducing parking, also could be considered a financial incentive, so the less parking someone builds, that would be a financial incentive as well. So switching out of, uh, the incentives and looking at, uh, two of the, uh, projects that we've been, uh, focusing in on, uh, first is the West Hewitt Area Concept Plan. This is an area of significant history within the community. A hundred years ago, uh, this November, uh, was the site of the Everett massacre at the docks down here. So there's been some, some issues, and so, uh, I think, uh, we had this conversation with the planning commission when we looked at some of the target redevelopment areas within Metro Everett, um, and the west side of downtown was identified, because there is really, uh, a lot of redevelopment potential that we had assessed, uh, by based on value of improvements in that area. Uh, in large measure, we didn't think there was a lot of need for us to incentivize and do any additional work on the west side, because the market has, has really gone that way. So a lot of the new development has been on the west side, because of the views of the water, uh, things have been kind of, uh, progressing at a pace that's been, uh, not bad. But in this area, we thought for a couple of different reasons. One is that the closing of the, uh, railroad tracks, uh, the crossing, uh, for people to get to the waterfront, was one reason for it. Second is that, uh, part of the railroad, uh, closing that, uh, uh, is that they wanna take out the bridge there, and they wanna fill, uh, that area. And so, as we start looking at the potential of that, uh, what can we do, uh, that would create a, a place there? Third is, as you, you know, you think about Hewitt Avenue, and, uh, I walk this, uh, every day just about now, and you come up Hewitt Avenue, and you have the great median and landscape area, and then it ends at Rucker, um, and to continue that, that landscaping and the, uh, treatment there, until you get to a place, uh, down to the water. So it kind of, it's a natural place to kinda gravitate, uh, down to there. There's a, it's kind of an anchor, uh, pardon the pun, so. Um, so we've come up with a concept plan that, uh, for this is, uh, drafting, and, uh, we actually had a meeting, we invited the, uh, businesses and property owners down the lower end of Hewitt, um, so we sent it out to quite a few people, and we had, um, not very many show up. I think we had six or seven in attendance, but, uh, it was actually, uh, very well-received. And so it was, it was pretty interesting, 'cause I was kinda imagining a little bit more pushback than, um, than that, but, uh, it was well-received. But the concept, again, is, is to take the, um, is to take the streetscape, uh, of Hewitt Avenue, look at continuing that, uh, down to, to the end, to create kind of a Hewitt Plaza area, and if I can get the, the mouse to work, um, here, down at the end. And at the same time, is to try to, try to create some of these pathways going back to the waterfront. So to do some, looking at some ways to create a pedestrian bicycle path, uh, that gets you back to the waterfront, going up to, uh, what the port is doing up here, into the Milltown Trail, or to come back to the trail that exists right now going down to Pigeon Creek. So, looking at some of these areas to do some, uh, improvements in there for that purpose. At the same time is that this is a major freight corridor, um, that's going down to the waterfront, so we have to be cognizant of that. Uh, there's, uh, some improvements that are gonna be being made by the city within this corridor to move freight, and so we really have to separate the issue of freight, pedestrians and bike, bicycles in there. California Street is the east-west designated bike route in the bicycle plan here. Uh, we have sections that have some bike lanes already, uh, built in here in the downtown area, and then down towards Broadway. Um, the, uh, Public Works Department actually has a, uh, funding right now to do the design from, uh, for the bike route from, uh, I believe from Broadway all the way out to Highway Two, uh, to do a bike route for that. And so they're trying to, uh, create that linkage, uh, there on the east-west. And so again, having this east-west connection, then coming up here to kind of finish, uh, this here would help, uh, do some things, uh, for, uh, pedestrian and bicycle movements in the area. There still is interest, and this drawing doesn't show it at this time, but it will, is there still is interest, uh, to can, to look at finding ways to cross the railroad here still. And so it's not something that's, uh, given up. We don't have that drawn on this, but, uh, that's some of the initial feedback, and there's interest from the mayor of, of, uh, looking at finding a way to do that. We have to get up and over the railroad, and we have to find a place to, to end it on, on the other side, and so that is, that is a challenge as part of that. Uh, this is just a, initial sketch of what, uh, this might look like. Uh, the property down at the end actually is a brownfield site, uh, we've assessed that, it's a vacant piece of property, so we just, uh, drew a building in, just for sake of, uh, illustration right now, where it comes up to the street front. Uh, there's really wide right-of-way in this area, so it's pretty amazing how much, uh, widen sidewalk and activity and medians and parking you can accommodate down in that area, and then to create the idea of this, uh, space down here that would, again, bring people down to here and the businesses, uh, in this area to enjoy that, uh, views of the water, uh, and another just kind of destination, uh, for downtown and other people, uh, to go onto this area. So then I'm gonna transition to the other end of Metro Everett, and, um, so the light rail station area. Um, so we had a, uh, shret, uh, that we had back in June, where we had, uh, several folks that, uh, came to this, uh, kind of look at some, uh, ideas of design, uh, for, uh, if light rail does come to Everett, and it's on the ballot this year, but even if it, uh, isn't approved, uh, this time is, you know, we think it's inevitable, at some point, uh, light rail will be there. And so, to look at, trying to establish the principles of what that would be, uh, within, within the area. And so, um, as, uh, someone didn't like the long word that it had about, uh, the location, the explanation of it, so I just wrote location, 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 'cause everyone knows what that means. But the principle behind this is really that, that came about was, we really think that the light rail station where it lands in, in the metro area, uh, needs to serve both downtown and Everett Station. So it needs to be physically, uh, in a spot that serves that area really well. Uh, Everett Station itself was located, uh, where the buses are because of, of where the train was, and the train and the heavy rail is kind of fixed, we're not gonna be moving the heavy rail. But we have the ability to put the light rail in a different location, and so, to bring it up closer to the hill kinda serves, uh, in, in the middle there, has some ability for having a location, uh, there to help serve both downtown and Everett Station. As we went through the design, some of the things that came out, and we had, uh, Everett Transit and Community Transit there, so one of the things that we realized is that there was initial conversations that everything had to happen in one location, so all the bus transfers, the bus-to-bus, and the bus-to-light rail, all had to happen in one location. As we started talking through this problem, we realized that if there's a way to, uh, have the light rail station where the buses go by the light rail station, but we continue to have a bus-to-bus transfer in another location, is that we don't have to pick up, we didn't have to have the light rail at the existing bus station, or we didn't have the, have to have the bus station pick up and move to another location. So, be a way of, uh, eliminating a lot of expenses, uh, for that. And so that was, uh, uh, something that was, uh, really kinda came out of the brainstorming that we, uh, had together. Then, of course, uh, trying to make all the, the modes connect, the, uh, pedestrian, bicycle, bus, and, uh, light rail. Again, improving walkability, uh, is a big part of this. And then, uh, finally is minimizing the regional commuter parking. So what we, uh, kinda came to a conclusion, we really didn't wanna become the parking lot for outlying areas, and we didn't wanna have, uh, all that traffic from outlying areas go through our urban area, where we're trying to create an urban atmosphere, a pedestrian atmosphere, and have all that congestion that's happening in there. So, is to minimize the regional commuter parking, and that goes back to some location issues that we have. So with this, and again, uh, this was a team effort, uh, Alan really led the way in a lot of this, uh, kind of, uh, in fact, Alan did some of the initial sketches on all this stuff, and so, um...
It didn't look quite this good.
Uh, yeah, yeah, well, it didn't look as good, and then, uh, we had, uh, Paul Papelka do some things, uh, and it looked a little bit better, and then we sent it down to Makers and it ended up, uh, looking even better, um, as a result of that. And there, and by the way, they're actually doing some, uh, modeling of three-dimensional things right now, too, so that we'll be able to show that at the open house, so people will see how this flows. So let me walk through some of the, the things. So again, the location of the, uh, station right here, so this is, uh, Pacific Avenue, uh, this is Thirty-Second Street. So the idea of locating, uh, the light rail station in, uh, closer to Broadway was part of the principle here, so that it would serve downtown and Everett Station. So, that was one of the principal things that we had here. Uh, whether this is a little bit closer to Broadway or closer to McDougal, uh, it could go either way, and so we're not, you know, there's nothing that we've done where, you know, it has to be exactly there, things like that. These, again, are conceptual, but the principle behind this is that we thought somewhere in this location really helped serve both downtown and Everett Station. So, this could move a little bit north, a little bit south, could move east, west, things like that, but somewhere in this area really, really helped with that. Again, I wanna talk about location, about the regional parking area here. Putting this on the other side of the railroad tracks, uh, would mean that the, the regional commuters are coming here, and we're trying to have more of the traffic circulation over here, and not in the place where we're trying to do transit-oriented development. So, have more of that traffic, uh, happen over, uh, in this location. So one of the things that came up when we did the, uh, design, uh, of this, or when we talked really about the bus-to-light rail and the bus-to-bus transfer, is that, what we realized is that there is, uh, sometimes the, uh, topography of Everett is, uh, works against us, sometimes it can work for us. In this case, there's a potential that the topography can work for us, and that, as you, uh, Pacific Avenue, as you go up and over the railroad tracks, as you, if you walk this, you know that you go down to McDougal, and then you come back up to Broadway. And so, one of the things that we, uh, realized is that there's a potential to extend that bridge over McDougal to go to Broadway, so we basically kind of flattened that grade. And we do that, we can bring the road, McDougal or something, that will come underneath this, this area in here, and so this becomes a busway that comes in here. So, we have buses that are coming from this direction, that will come in here, and they'll be able to go to a platform, and they'll drop off people to go to light rail. Or, if they're just doing a bus-to-bus transfer, they would continue their path into Everett Station for a bus-to-bus. So again, rather than having the bus-to-bus transfer have to pick up, basically, all these buses come in this direction, would go right by the light rail, drop people off, uh, as they go in. If they're coming down Pacific, uh, our proposal or concept here is to, um, whoa, uh, is to widen, uh, the bridge so that all the routes would come in, there'd be a dedicated lane, um, here, so all the swift routes on the local transit that comes in, they would be able to drop off on Pacific here, and they'd be able to go right to the light rail, uh, station here. Those that are coming in, uh, buses from the south would come in off of Thirty-Second, perhaps, here, and they would have a bus stop right here, so a short walk, uh, into, uh, this location here. For walkability, several things that are part of this, we're looking at, uh, the idea of Thirty-Second and doing a plaza here to Everett Station, so this becomes really kind of a bus and then a walking, uh, area, uh, primarily, um, within this area here. Um, and so it becomes very, uh, very pleasant atmosphere between, uh, light rail and the bus transfer. The same time, uh, one of the things that we think, because we're assuming that light rail's gonna come in an elevated, uh, thing, if not, this design's, uh, fatally flawed, um, because it is, uh, based on a elevated, uh, light rail coming in. And, uh, but one idea is that if, if it is at an elevator, is there a way to connect off the elevated area with a pedestrian crossing and going across Broadway? So you'd be able to walk along the platform, and then you go across Broadway, and then you come down on the other side, and then be able to walk towards, uh, downtown, towards Xfinity Arena, you come up Wall Street, um, or, uh, Hewitt, or, uh, Pacific, any of these areas. We have a couple different, uh, locations, uh, one is Wall Street, one is Pacific, uh, just, uh, talking with some of the staff members, some of the three-D modeling, they think it's, uh, probably working out a little bit better more down in this area, which I, I think that our initial conversations is that it's better here anyhow. Hewitt's really a better walking corridor than, than any other ones anyhow, so the more it can go towards Hewitt, uh, probably the better for that. Then, uh, as part of the walking is... our initial conversations is that it's better here anyhow. Hewitt's really a better walking corridor than, than any other ones anyhow. So the more it can go towards Hewitt, probably the better for that. Then as part of the walking is if you come out of, if you're in the garage here, again, if we, this grade, you're not dropping down McDougal anymore. And so you'd be able to come out of the garage and you'd be able to go to the light rail station. And so you wouldn't have to go down and up for that. And so that should be a pleasant thing. Finally, as part of the Lowe's development, if Lowe's develops, we have some concept of having another pet crossing, pedestrian crossing across the railroad tracks there so people can get in to kind of create that urban atmosphere in this area. Should mention that we have two dash lines here. This is just alternative routes. So it's not two different, not both of them are going to happen. We, we didn't know, we know that's going to come from I-5. That's what we understand. And it could come down Broadway, McDougal. There's even potential it comes down the alleyway. So this isn't meant to try to show that there's two routes coming. It's just two alternative things that we saw as things in there. Finally, as part of this is that we actually haven't had the opportunity yet to talk with Sound Transit. We are going down there the week after next, I think, to walk through this. We did send it down to them. I don't know, we haven't heard anything back from them yet. But we anticipate getting some good feedback and some corrections to this, but, kind of thing. And so this is, again, some things that will evolve. And really some of the things that we, we think are important are some of these principles there. And I think the design clearly can change as part of that. So last slide I have really is just the next steps, going through these things, looking at a public open house on October 6th down at Everett Station, two hours, 4:30 to 6:30. The idea of plan drafting in the fall and winter, going to hearings in spring and summer. I think we'll probably have another open house, another major focus. As we look at the plan, I think one of the things that, major task that we still have is looking at some of the regulatory end of things and some of the plan issues and some concepts around that. And so we started to draft some of those things, and we're thinking about taking them to the open house, but we haven't really vetted them enough yet before we feel comfortable with that. And so we'll probably come back in the next couple of months to the Planning Commission, talk to you about some of the, a little more regulatory concepts there, get your feedback before we go to the public with that. So with that, I'd be glad to answer questions or take any feedback on things that we're missing.
Thank you. Lauren?
Nice work on the layout. That's, that's really good work. Question on it, though, is I see the tail yard or the tail track. Isn't there going to be a kind of a maintenance yard up here someplace because it's the end of the line?
Yes, that hasn't been located yet. It could be out, since the route will run up airport, that might be in some of the industrial land near Bainfield. It hasn't been cited yet, or we haven't really had those detailed discussions yet with Sound Transit.
I, I think it's a great idea to come up with a local concept and plan and take it to them and help direct their design process. I think that's just money and effort really well spent. So.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Commissioner Jordan?
Just a couple of comments. And I, I think you're on the right track, no pun intended, for an elevated guideway. Because, you know, I've actually done a lot of auditing on the, on the Sound Transit, you know, North Link and East Link and U-Link stations. And they all involve either a tunnel underground or an elevated track above ground. And I think that the fact that you're looking at the alignment right now is a very, a very, a positive thing to do. And I think that if you, as, as you start to formulate an idea of what the alignment's going to be, start looking at the, you know, further down as you go south, what's, you know, what are, what are some of the property issues that you're going to run into and how, you know, whether you're going to be at an elevated or surface or a tunnel type situation. But I think it's all right, even if we're talking about 50 years from now, because, you know, that's how much planning there needs to be on something like this. And, you know, even if we're all dead and gone by the time it comes about, I think it's still a worthwhile endeavor to, to pursue it. So, you know, for long-range planning.
I'll be here.
Oh, not you.
I'll be.
But you know what I'm saying. I think I'm very happy to see that you're, you're looking at this right now, even if, even if it's way, way far in the future, which might not be, you know, things happen and who knows?
And I think the initial things that we've gotten from Sound Transit is that it's elevated from the point it leaves I-5 to, to the metro area. And then it has some ground areas, I think, along I-5 and stuff like that. But we're kind of under the assumption that as it comes into this part of Everett, it is going to be elevated. That was the things that they had put out in their initial literature. But again, that's stuff we'll, you know, we want to talk to them and make sure that we're not off base on that.
Is there anyone in the audience who wants to address the Planning Commission on this topic? Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
I, I just had a couple of real brief ones. I, I agree on if, if we're reducing the park impact fee, because, well, excuse me, there is no park impact fee. So if we're reducing the open space and stuff like that, I, I like the concept of a pay-in lieu of type of program in order to do that. I, I'd also recommend looking at, you're talking about the new job tax credits, is looking at if they're creating living wage jobs for, for that type of reduction rather than just any jobs. And then lastly, just the impact fees for, you know, the reduction for utility connection charges. I know in the last 10 years for me, they've more than doubled for utility costs. And, you know, we have some, obviously some conveyance issues in the north end that, you know, the rest of us are paying for that don't necessarily live in the north end. And what kind of fiscal impact that would be to the current ratepayers for any type of reduction of those type of impact fees for utilities. There was an article recently in the paper about a $70 million project that, you know, it's gonna, they're gonna need some rates for, for the public works facilities and things like that. So it'd be interesting to know, for the public to know what, what those impacts would potentially be by reducing those to achieve that housing in the, in the downtown metro area. So. We'll start down here. Commissioner Lawrence?
Kudos to the living wage comment. That is an excellent perspective to add. And so I just want to recognize that. Following up, I, I also think maybe for financial incentives, and this has been a conversation we've had, the alliance for early adopters in the Everett Station or people who are, or less developed proportions of the Everett, of the Metro Center, and early, additional benefits for early adopting, because there's a lot more risk when you're the first building there. So for those who are, you know, starting in an area that doesn't traditionally have as much, as strong of a market, I think more incentives would be something we should consider. And that's, that's my comment.
I would just echo Commissioner Sands' kudos. I think you've done a nice job here. I would also say, in addition to talking to Sound Transit, which of course you're going to have to do, if you haven't already, make sure you engage community transit in this. Because if you're trying to reduce demand for parking around here, getting good bus connections is going to be critical. So.
Community transit has been at the table with us when we've been designing the, doing the charrette work.
Right.
As well as Everett Transit, I hope.
I would assume so.
I, I have one quick question, because where you have the TOD development, and most of that, based on what I understand, is city property. And so as you're looking at, you know, what these opportunities are in terms of the future development, are you also, as financial incentives, looking at public-private partnerships in terms of leasing property to get, you know, things of that nature? Because our number one asset is the real estate we own. And there's a lot of that around Everett Station, my understanding.
Actually, I think most of what you're seeing up there that's shown as TOD is privately owned, but there are some city, or Everett Transit-owned parcels, and Sound Transit-owned parcels. For example, the light blue Sound Transit parking garage is on property that is owned by ST.
The parking lot in front of the Transit Station.
And that is owned by Everett Transit. And we actually have been approached by developers who would like to see some ability to develop mixed-use project on that particular site and one further to the south.
And, and what I'm talking about are where the parking lots currently are that are surrounding the Everett Station. I mean, that, those are, they look small on this, but they're actually quite large and can accommodate big, some, if you go up, you can get a fair amount of density there.
So one becomes a plaza. So one becomes a plaza right here. So that, that's parking there. And then this would be, this is parking right there. So.
And then south of the swift.
And just off the map.
Platform, there's more, you know, so.
The other thing I want to point out is, it was actually, this drawing, we didn't realize that this is supposed to be all TOD, all in this area, too. So until they sent me some of the initial rough sketches of the 3D, and they're showing me the old little buildings there, I didn't realize that we didn't have that in the sketch. So it just didn't have the space for it, because we have these two alternative alignments. But we would anticipate basically, you know, all of these areas filling up, including the station area, whatever's left over as part of this, this is a, would be a major, you know, development on the whole block as well. So.
Mr. Sands?
Thank you. Alan, I was kind, or David, I was kind of curious, on the multi-fac, multifamily, the tax exemptions, are they a deferral and someone has to kind of pay back the deferred amount for the eight or 10 years? Or is it just, they're just waived?
It's, it's an exemption. It's waived for eight years or 12 years if you do at least 20% meeting a definition of affordable housing.
Yeah. So it's not really a deferral. It's just a exemption.
So it's an exemption, correct.
So is it possible to take one of those properties and run an example of what the cost would be to the city to offer all those exemptions? And then to understand how the, the money comes back?
Yeah, we've, we've had that exercise done, actually on some port property where the city council recently applied the property tax exemption to a small part of the waterfront place development. And Port had a consultant provide some analysis of what the deferral, not deferral, but the impact does for, not only for the taxes that are foregone, but what happens afterward as a result of the housing being built and, you know, financial benefits that you realize from having the housing built and what the construction taxes that are generated and the taxes that are generated by people who live in the housing that are shopping locally and so forth.
And when we talk about exemption on the property tax, it's just the small portion that's the city property tax, the three bucks per thousand, right?
It's everything.
It's the improvement. So.
So the schools have to buy in?
Schools have to buy in, the county has to buy in, Port District has to buy in.
Right.
And we have those agreements already?
Yeah, the way the tax, or the way that works, we can apply it and they don't have to agree with it.
So the one thing, it is a waiver, but it's, it's, it's not adding it to the tax roll. So you're not going, the taxing entities are not collecting less. They're just not collecting more. They're, until the eight or 12-year period is coming up.
Well, it's, yeah, the tax, it's interesting to do the tax calculation, because it's assessed value versus millage rates and all that. And the rates change based upon the valuations and stuff like that. But it seems to me that if you're talking about the school district, for instance, or the port not receiving tax revenues for new construction for eight to 10 years or 12 years, I, I don't know how the city is able to do that and give away, well, not, have the county collect the taxes for them.
Yeah. And the way it works is the, the land is still taxed, the property, you still pay property taxes on the land. And in a mixed-use building, you still pay property taxes on the non-residential portions of a mixed-use building. But the value of the residential improvements is not taxed for that eight years or 12 years.
Oh, so it's just the improvement?
Right. Right.
Just the building, yeah.
Just the value of the residential improvements.
Part of the building. Right. But it's still.
The first two floors.
You are affecting other taxing districts. It seems to me that, you know, when you get down to the numbers, it's a question of really how big the number is. But then it's really not about the number, in my view. It's about the fact that the city has an incentive program and others have an incentive program. If we didn't have one, we'd be at a disadvantage. So we almost have to have one to kind of be on the same playing field as everybody else.
And not only that, I mean, there are a lot of properties that are within the areas where the property tax exemption is available. And it's still not economically viable for them to develop or redevelop their properties, even with the property tax incentive. Every project that's been built in the downtown in the last 15 years has taken advantage of that.
Oh, sure.
Because it's, and, and every one of them has said they could not have made it pencil out without the tax exemption. And so the, you know, 1,000 units that have been built since that time probably would not have happened without the tax exemption.
So, quick question. It's outside of this slide, but obviously the area between the freeway and this area is critical as the gateway into this. Can you give us the update on what's going on with the Public Works? Because I saw that it's gone out to bid, but it was also under contract recently. It looked like that fell through. So is that, we're not planning that portion of it at this point, right? Because it's going to go out to them.
We're, we're not doing this kind of charrette analysis on, on that area there. It's within the metro area. There is an architect that is already under contract to do some of this work. The amendment was to add quite a bit of work to that contract, along with a lot of budget to plan for the total redevelopment of the Public Works properties, including the Everett Transit property, maintenance facility. All of that property would be redeveloped and include, you know, all the functions that are down there now. But it would be taking care of some old buildings that have very badly deferred maintenance and not very earthquake safe. And so there's just, you know, one of those major redevelopments that would have to be paid for through some combination of utility rates and other, other funds. But it, that, that's the nature of the proposal. I don't know if that answered your question.
No, I think it, it does. So I mean, at this point, that's essentially, that's going forward, right? So that, that section of property is not going to be mixed-use or public-private partnership.
That's correct. And it was, it was considered at, for quite a long time to be a candidate for private redevelopment, if the city would surplus it and then have to relocate its public works facilities elsewhere. The problem is that everywhere that the city looked, there were more costs than redeveloping where they are today, and probably more challenges as far as the geographic area that we serve with Public Works. And if you're too far north, then there's a lot of extra transportation cost to serve the south end of the city. And it's important to be where they can get on major arterials and not have to wait for railroad trains to cross the grade crossings and so forth. And so, yeah, that, every, every scenario they looked at, it just kept coming back to making a lot more sense financially to stay where they are.
And then the other real quick question is just a timeline question. Obviously, we need to do the planning correctly and everything. But obviously, we have an upswing right now in development as a region with the potential, obviously, that that could change over a period of time. Are we looking at any kind of opportunities to put any of the initial incentives? I mean, the transit-oriented development, going back to what Alex talked about, is there any possibility to put some of the initial kind of first adopter, first developer type of incentives out there sooner than later, you know, on a shorter timeline?
Well, I guess in the world of code writing and plan writing, sooner rather than later, to us, a year from now would be soon. I mean, and if we can get something before you, you know, within probably less than a year for consideration, then, you know, that would be a lot of work that we have to do to get between where we are today and then. But yeah, that's, that's conceivable, that we would maybe create some incentives for things to happen earlier and phase those out so that people would know that it's pretty urgent to do something soon if they're thinking about it.
And they have to be appropriate steps. I don't mean to suggest that we bypass that, but making sure we get those things done sooner than later.
And out of curiosity, if I may just like clarify, I mean, it's a lot of work that goes into a year. But is any of it like a staffing constraint? Or is it just like the process constraint?
More process than staffing.
Okay.
I think that we've got very talented staff that have written a lot of codes in the long-range planning section of our department. And so it's just really a matter of the... long-range planning section of our department, and so it's just really a matter of the order of planning and just getting consensus around what it is we want to do.
And just to be clear, it was not, it was more of a bandwidth question as opposed to the undisputed talent here, of the staff here, so.
I recognize that, thank you.
I noticed on the slide for new financial incentives, I wonder if there should be another bullet in there for something that I guess I'd call targeted investment strategies, whereby the city would step up and put some money into making, actually pay for the roadway improvements, pedestrian facilities, other things. I mean, I know the utility funds, well, it had a lot of money until we started building the new shops, but I know when the capital program comes to us each year, is there a possibility to kind of rework some of those projects and put some funding in here so that the city's kind of front-loading some of the site requirements?
And that's actually an interesting question that might offer some comments under other business, but the City Council is going to have a visioning process, and this grew out of a retreat they had in January. Part of the purpose of that discussion, at least in January, was so that they could help figure out how to prioritize capital improvement investments, and I guess there's a desire to have a more coherent policy about where those investments are made and timing of those, and, but that's something I can cover when we're done with this part of the presentation under other business. I've got just a little bit more info on that.
And I think in what we have before you, I think there are a couple of investments that we have, so up here is including that pedestrian path, so that's one of the conversations is, you know, to do some improvements from Everett Station to downtown, so that could be an investment that happens sooner rather than later. That's not a 20-year plan, that's a, you know, as soon as we can plan concept. The Lower Hewitt Avenue, again, is something that potentially an investment in that area and making those improvements, so see those areas as potential investments that would return, and then even the community renewal area, there's some conversation around that that could happen about some investments that the city would do based on kind of a blighted condition, so looking at that. So that's part of the purpose of the community renewal plan, is to look at what can we do to address that blight, which could include city investments as part of that.
One other, just quick transportation question with regards to, I know there's been conversation with Everett Transit, Community Transit, Sound Transit, but what about private partners for like non-traditional public transit? And I mean more or less Zipcar, Car2Go, these are other sort of private players who are adding more depth and diversity to the mobility situation here. Those are things, those are elements that make transit-oriented development even more enticing, because I wouldn't even need a car, and if I do need a car, I can access it on my smartphone, and then I can go use it to go pick up groceries, and then take it back home. Has there been any conversation with firms like that?
Not that I'm aware of, but I think it's kind of a market-driven thing, and, you know, what comes first, the transportation, or the services, the amenities, or the density? I think we need to bump up the densities before it makes financial sense for the private sector to provide those kinds of services, and so we're working on that density end of it.
I think what I read, and what, you're right, the market's going to dictate it, but in the planning, are we going to do some pre-planning so that those facilities would have a place to locate? When you're in a parking, I'm building a building X, and I need 100 stalls, if I use this means of transportation, maybe I only need 60, I mean.
Yeah, and that's the kind of thing that Seattle has done a lot of, where they have reduced their off-street parking requirements in residential buildings because of the Zipcar, or, you know, the private services like that, where shared cars, and you don't, you know, have to have the expense of a car, and you certainly have a lot less demand for parking spaces then.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Nope, other business. The only thing I wanted to mention is that the mayor and City Council, you may have seen the article in the paper the other day, are going to be having a special meeting on October 1st, it's a Saturday morning, and they're going to talk more about a visioning process. The idea is to, that they want to get, last time we did this in '05, '04 and '05, there was an intimate group of 32 citizens that were convened to create a vision for the future. We're going to, I guess, this time, limit it to only 15, but the city is seeking applicants to be a part of that process, and the idea is to get a very diverse group of citizens from age, ethnic backgrounds, geography, professional interests and so forth, so that they get a very representative group of citizens to work on this. It would be something that would start in the fall and work through the spring, but on the first, the council and mayor are going to have a conversation about what they want this vision process to lead to. At this point, it's not very well-defined as a result of their January 2016 retreat, there was some discussion, but not a lot of clarity, but this is something that the community has done on an average about every 10, 12 years, and so it's about time again to do this, and it's always been a valuable exercise, but just wanted to put that out there so that anybody who knows somebody that might be interested in getting involved in the process, they can encourage them to contact Bob Boulderjack at the mayor's office.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it. Are we adjourned?
You're the.
Okay, photo time.
All right.